I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. If anyone has any questions, additions, changes to the existing agenda?
Some of them.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion to approve the existing agenda by Maggie Bass, second by Bruce Wolf. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0.
Your council member, Ryan Willnady.
Oh, okay. Well, now we can steal his pen, do it. Maggie, there you go.
No, no, you lose, you lose.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is we're very honored to have former councilperson Amy Jerk in presence today, and we would like to recognize her for her service to the city of Dupre as a council member from January of 2015 to June 30th of 2018. Looks like, I think I was the only one that... were you with Amy?
Yes.
Amy a little bit, but one thing I can say about Amy, she always came well-prepared, and that was a great honor to serve with her, and we do miss her. I know she's enjoying her new gig in Belle Plaine. They're building a new pool, and Glenn already tried to dish off some of the old pool stuff to see if they needed any, but I guess she didn't take any offers. But at this time, I would like Amy to come forward, and I'd like to give her the key to the city. Again, like I told Dave Brujic, Amy, this doesn't work for anything, but I hope you take it and esteem honor to have served the city of Dupre. All right, thanks. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Speech? Okay. Next, we're gonna have a, looks like a 2019 street and utility improvements project. Mr. Chris Cabbott's gonna kind of give us a little rundown of what's going on, and it looks like we have to approve, is this approving the final layout?
Uh, well, okay, yeah, what this is, is again, part of the public improvement process. Before you use a resolution for approving plans and specifications and ordering, authorizing advertisement for bids. Plans have been prepared.
You want us to?
And we're basically now ready to advertise for bids. The schedule is that the plans will be advertised first next Thursday, Thursday of next week, and scheduled to open bids on March 22nd, Friday, March 22nd. Of course, it'll be posted in the Dupre Times, again, according to state statute, and then in addition to that, it'll be advertised on S E H and the Quest CDN website, where most of the contractors actually go down for obtaining information on projects and bidding. So again, it's proposed to bid, open bids on 10 o'clock on Friday, March 22nd, and right now, we're scheduled for assumed award of bids on April 1st. The one thing that might change that slightly is, again, this is a cooperative project between Scott County and the city, and one of the things we'll be working through in the next three or four, you know, two or three or four weeks with them is finalizing the cooperative construction agreement with Scott County. So inevitably, that will be coming back to the council for that approval before we would do an award bid. Hopefully, that happens the same night, if not, if they could, well, the award bid could get pushed off by two weeks. Right now, we're assuming everything will be a status quo, and it'll be on April 1st. Couple things worth noting, we are going to hold, as we do with all our other street projects, is we're gonna hold an open house, and right now, it has been scheduled for Thursday, March 21st, from 5:00 to 6:30, because residents and property owners an opportunity to come in, ask any questions of us before the project obviously gets to construction. I do note in my agenda report that, you know, I've been in communication with Scott County regarding the County Road 37 portion of this project, laid down some of the initial planning, we've basically just incorporated it into the plans, and we'll have a final meeting probably next week, and I'm expecting them to sign off on the plans as well. So as you, obviously, since they're part of the funding on this, they'll be signing off on plans as well, as authorization. Just a couple of quick things I thought were worth noting, again, for the public that might be watching at home. This location map, again, is shown on the title sheet here. I can't seem to operate this really well. Okay, that's obviously the streets that are proposed in the project. Again, County Road 37, which is the cooperative project between Scott County and the city, and then all the local streets that are highlighted here in black. I'm not gonna list through them all here. Obviously, we have this short stretch in Naylor that's proposed to be basically resurfaced, and then we've got a stretch of trunk sanitary sewer that's being replaced on Third Avenue. They're just east of the railroad tracks, and that's basically being done, have that done and completed before we have a 2020 project on Main Street. It's kind of a critical length, and it'll facilitate things in 2020 if that's done next year. I don't like to keep going in the wrong direction. All right, just pointing out, this is the roundabout on County Road 37 that is proposed. Actually, in this, the size of this intersection, the way it is today, again, we're replacing very little of the outside curb, mostly just for pedramps, and this will actually be fairly close in size to the roundabouts that exist today, east and west of town. Not quite that big, but pretty big, so this is almost a big mini roundabout. The one on 37 will be even more closer to what we're gonna expect to see on Main Street in 2020. One thing I do want to point out, I just figured out who's talking about. Detour routes. While these roundabouts are being constructed, also, to find a damn idea, say, yeah, build a roundabout, but starting to look at, okay, while these are being built, we're gonna be looking at detour routes to get basically around the main traffic. Obviously, the locals, those who live in the area, will find a way in and out of wherever they want, but we needed to establish and set detour route. So right now, it's in the contract that the one on, first of all, there will be no construction that will take place until school is out, so we're talking, there won't be any work that would prohibit or restrict traffic until after school is out. There may be some curb work, some minor work allowed along 37, stuff that doesn't restrict traffic, but there won't be any work on the roundabout, et cetera. Once the roundabout work starts, it'll have to be closed traffic.
Can we move to the local projects?
Yeah, well, they can be, yeah, so earlier on in this, in May, they can start work on the local projects, et cetera. We just don't want to restrict traffic around the schools, obviously, until June. And then it obviously needs to be completed before school starts at the end of August. The roundabout at 37 is, we designated that that one should be done first, and so when that occurs, the detour route will be up Lexington to where it turns into Heritage, 12th to 21, Highway 21. Basically, that's gonna be the route that'll have to be taken. Consequently, that's kind of the same route for when the roundabout happens on 12th. The detour route, again, will have to be down Heritage, Lexington, County Road 37, and 21, to basically circumvent that area. The other thing that we'll have to, what we'll need to do is, in cooperation with the school, we're planning to meet with them here shortly, is when that work is happening at 12th and Columbus, there will be no, there won't be any way to get up north on Columbus, so we're gonna have to look at working with the school to have a, have a detour out through the parking lot, to access skate park, the compost site, and those areas up there for a short period of time. I'm gonna guess that that's not gonna be an issue, if it is, we're gonna have to come up with a Plan B, which is a little difficult for this time. So anyway, I wanted you to be aware of that, because, you know, I can anticipate you might get some calls, especially from folks over here, if there ends up being a lot of traffic to detour this area, and obviously, we need to do it, and it's really the only way to do it, you just can't build roundabouts conveniently under traffic, it just doesn't work.
And Chris, when you reroute to Lexington, we might want to put a parking sign, no parking signs on one side of the street, because when parking is on both sides, it's very difficult for even a regular car to get through. And then the other thing is that there are a lot of children in that area that use that park, so just a little concerned about that.
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at it. There are obviously some stops, there are stops along the way, but it might be an area where we, you know, again, looking if there's something more that we need to do, or we'll work on that. So that's kind of it, in a nutshell, unless you've got any questions, I just kind of wanted to bring your attention to that. Bruce, you got a question?
Yeah, was there any material changes to this final design from when we met last night? Talked a lot there?
No, at this point, no, nothing, scope, everything basically is the same. We have not finalized, you know, we'll do an updated engineer's estimate, I don't have one yet today, or we'll definitely have it here within the next couple of weeks, and certainly before bids, but right now, substance-wise, nothing's changed from, it's still on target where we were at the feasibility study.
Did the, any conversation with the school about the sidewalk on the northwest corner?
We have added into the plan, so, and that was kind of the direction we had. Of course, we'll share that with them when we meet here shortly, so.
Then, I'm not sure I followed you when you talked about the improvement east of the railroad tracks, is that Second Street?
Uh, it's all Third Avenue northwest, so it's between, it's just east of the railroad tracks, parallel to the railroad tracks between Main Street and Second Street. There's a sanitary sewer, trunk sanitary sewer main that's in that, in that area, actually, two of them.
That's going north and south of?
Yeah, yeah, and it's gravel, there is gravel.
Next to the bar.
Oh, that one.
Yeah, between Flipside and the railroad track.
And we're replacing the sanitary line?
Yeah, it's, they're both clay lines, they're undersized, they're, what we, what we're doing is we're gonna add a larger pipe, we can actually get lower, we can increase the capacity, which will increase the capacity on Main Street, et cetera. Again, it's to our advantage to get it done ahead of the Main Street project for a number of reasons, just not wait till next year to have it done.
Was this cited in that previous report?
Yes, it was, it's been in the feasibility study, it was actually identified in the Main Street feasibility study, but it was recommended that we would try to do it under a 20 heching project if we were able to, so we did include it in the report and in the funding and the financing.
And I was thinking that this went further north, yeah, past Second Street on, parallel to railroad tracks, all the way up there?
Yeah, so you're right, so, well, this project would only be up to just shy of Second Street. We had talked about in the conference of sanitary sewer plan, that we did need to investigate that, the continuation of that same sewer line up along the railroad tracks, basically up to almost County Road 37.
And that's too big of a bite to do that as part of this project, you're too late, Maggie.
Well, we're not recommending yet that anything even needs to be done, we need to investigate, and whatever we would do, it's going to be some specialized work, because it's gonna be difficult to get into that area along the railroad tracks, and there's a number of different technologies that could be done, again, without knowing what the situation is, and we don't even have a recommendation yet. It may ultimately be to do nothing, or align the, or align that pipe, again, with that area north of Second that we refer to in the town sewer plan. But until, we've televised it and investigated, and we really have no recommendation yet at this point.
Is that a little milk road that's next to the tracks there, is that city or is that railroad?
That little, the what now?
The little melbar, the cow run up, up to the side there, is this little, just a little road that goes along up there?
Railroad.
Railroad?
Give me on the north side of Second Street?
Yep.
That's railroad.
Ken?
Any other questions, otherwise free of consideration, again, is that resolution, and then again, I just did point out, just, not that we're expecting any issues, but contingent on the Scott County engineers' final approval.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I'll move it if you want.
Okay, motion by Rick Sandler, I will second it. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. Thank you, Chris. Glenn?
Gibson.
It's your show.
Thanks. In front of you, we have a proposal for bio-solid storage mixing improvement at the wastewater plant, and I want to recognize John Peterson for Bowman Make is here. John Peterson was involved extensively in the design and construction of the wastewater plant, so he's pretty familiar with the operation and how it all works. Just give you a little history of the bio solids tank, it's located in the northwest corner, outside of the wastewater plant. The bio solids tank actually takes the solids or the waste out of the wastewater, or stores the waste from the wastewater, after it's gone through a little process, and then the water goes through the rest of the process, being treated, filtered, things like that, goes to the stream. Bio solids goes to this underground tank, it's stored there for a week or two, depending on how much waste we have coming into the plant, then it's pulled out of that tank, ran through a process called pressing it, which is just de-watering it, getting rid of the water, separating the sludge and the water, the sludge is dried, bagged, and then we give that to the farmers to put out to the field. We noticed back in 2016 that there was a break in the system that is on the bottom floor of this bio solids tank. There's a big air blower that blows air through this air, this grid system that's laying on the bottom of the tank. On the backside of the page for the handout, it's kind of a design, it's kind of hard to read, but it gives you an idea of how this grid system works through there. We found that there was a break, we could just tell that there wasn't a mixing in that whole tank like there normally is. Staff went down, fixed the break, thought everything was good the next year, we found another one, and in 2018, we found another one, did a lot more investigating, and realized that the piping system was very brittle. We're assuming it's coming from the heat that the blower will produce, the friction of the air running through there, things like that. So this proposal is basically looking at replacing the existing system, hopefully coming up with a plan that will put in a material or a piping system that will last a little longer than eight years, or almost nine years, I should say. We're also talking about putting in a better kind of diffuser or system, so that the air kind of creates more of a mixture. The mixture is important in that bio solids tank, because it helps keep the solids in solution, so they're easily pulled out by the pumps, and also keeps, if you don't have the mixing going on, you'll start creating quite an odor, which then during the summer causes us or the neighbors quite a bit of problems. The other thing we plan on looking at and hopefully incorporating in this project is putting in a mechanical mixer. Sometimes those solids come to us as kind of more of a heavier base solid, so sometimes the air probably just can't mix it like we need it to be mixed. We'd have the mechanical mixer there also to kind of keep it stirred up, keep it in solution, just keep it floating, basically. It's kind of the nuts and bolts of it. We had budgeted for the total, for the proposal and, or for the engineering and design, and also for the construction of $710,000 budgeted for this project, so it would be staff recommendation that the council directs John Peterson for Bowman Make to proceed in the engineering and implementing the bio solids mixing improvement project. I don't know if you have any questions for me or for John Peterson?
Maybe John can come up with kind of, I know, I think John, I was told that, like Northfield and some other cities that had a similar type of system have had similar types of issues, and I'm just wondering, I mean, what are some of the options, obviously, to look at, different type of piping or whatever?
Sure, so, just a little background, this, this part of the plant takes a lot of wear, because it runs pretty much 24/7, and typically, we, you don't, you know, other parts, we put a lot of redundancy into them, so that we can take things offline, isn't it? Sludge process net's not normally the way, because it's an expensive way to run it, and this is just storage, so even if the blower, everything goes down, the plant can still run, and we're still meeting limits while we put together the fix, okay? So, it's true, the other, we have a number of facilities where we're replacing this equipment at this point because of the heavy wear it is. What we also can't always predict very well is how the solids produced at a given facility are gonna react within that dryer and the press, and staff have been figuring out the best way to find the sweet spot to make that run, if you want to call it a sweet spot. And so I believe one thing that goes on in this case is, they've run it not at a full capacity, because it's heat, they get better operation in the dryer when they do that. Means we are dissipating that heat through the liquid, and so I think that has caused some of that brittleness we're seeing. We know that the facility we have, Shockley Midewalk and Sewer, doing the same process change-out right now in theirs, they noticed the same thing in their PVC piping. They are going to a diffuser at that facility also, there's been some advances in that diffuser technology that we think now is applicable to the bio solids.
What, Northfield?
Northfield's replacing, their entire system, of course, has been aligned for almost 20 years, partly because they burned the whole system up, so it's basically cutting out of the whole process for them, but they are replacing, going to a diffuser type system. I think we'll take a look here also at that, instead of PVC through the system, whether we can use some stainless steel in spots to help deal with those heat issues. Really, the only downside to stainless steel is cost, and so, you know, we'll look at using it traditionally to keep the cost going, but you might end up to the day a bit at how that cost in stainless steel is gonna go, so we can bid some options with that. Look to some things that are different.
When did you replace it before?
Never have.
Never have. It was it, but it's only been there for nine years.
Nine years.
And that PVC got eaten up like that, huh?
Apparently, I believe there was some heating going on there, we'll know better when it gets them chucked out, but that's what, from what was described to staff, it felt like there was some heating going on. I share, that's similar to what I've been told, they're seeing it in the Shockley Midewalk and Sewer community, where the PVC pipe is actually turning a little brown from the heat. There, they believe, it's been aligned a little longer, but there, they believe there was plugging going on that they weren't keeping up with, which is, makes the blower work harder, which makes the blower generate more heat, which then causes degradation of the piping.
You would think that the break at the fittings, Bruce?
You'd think that, we also would have thought that we're in a tank full of water, basically, we should be dissipating that heat, but that's what I'm saying, we could look at some places where maybe the main line did some stainless steel, because that's getting the heat, as you head out into the tank more, you should see less heat, it should dissipate out. And then I'll share, and this was really staff's idea on the, you know, that blower is due for a rebuild, it was probably due for a rebuild several years ago, according to the manufacturer, but it's been running, it's fine, but staff had come up with the idea of going out, purchasing another blower to replace this one, to get the rebuild done on this other one, budget that for a year or two, and it's available for just a simple swap-out, and, because this blower manufacturer has a really good program on rebuilding blowers, I've noticed, I had other facilities really, really encouraging about how well they worked with you and how cost-effective it is to rebuild the blower. So that was a staff idea about how to hammer that place where we didn't, we don't design ever done this before, we see, basically, that's an operational problem, keep the thing working while you're fixing it, and I think that's a great idea on their part, we're gonna broaden the places.
Ken?
I don't, is any other questions?
Ken left any questions?
I just have a comment, I don't know enough about it necessarily to ask questions, but it just, from, from the information that's being provided, that this broke, a couple failures on this, it would seem to me that there's a design flaw, something wasn't made right, because it certainly didn't make its useful life, period, and, I mean, my reaction is disappointment, but this isn't the normal occurrence.
Well, what I would say is what we're seeing in the other facilities we have, they have been doing those types of repairs on and off through time.
Wouldn't that also support the idea that there's a design flaw, it wasn't designed properly then?
Well, in some of these facilities, they're tacking those issues as they go, some, they haven't had those, those problems. It's a wear and tear item that's gonna have some abuse to it, I mean.
So you're happy with the seven, seven or nine years useful life, or you, that's what you would have expected?
Well, what I can't predict is, in our startup phase, were we in essence rapping that pipe in ways that we didn't anticipate?
Okay.
And I don't know that, and I'd say, in some facilities, they might be seeing maybe a similar problem, but I know I was talking to the folks in St. Peter, and almost identical layout in their sludge tank, and I asked them, how's it looking? They haven't been in the tank since 2012, they don't have any idea. For all they know, it's not doing a darn thing, or it's working great, but they haven't been in it to look, so I have not a lot to compare to in that place.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to jump in there either.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a...
We are looking for volunteer.
You didn't get the rookie council tour yet?
So this solution, what do you expect the solution useful life to be, what do you expect? Is this gonna be a solve the problem, or is just?
I believe what you've got is an item that's gonna take attention over time, yes. Will it take a full replacement? Diffusers probably have a, somewhere in the 10-year lifespan, going to a diffuser type system, this, you realize, is just a pipe with a hole drilled in it, so we know it has a tendency to want to plug, but there's nothing to replace except to drill out the pipe again, and, but diffuser's gonna give us a better performance, but that diffuser will have an age to it that will have to take replacement. Yeah, so there's just, there's no perfect solution in that piece of the plant. Touch on schedule, we're gonna go through design, basically through March, get the final bid documents written, you know, April, May, somewhere in that time, and we'll work out the time, we'll, you know, staff will come back to you and take bids for that work. We're gonna want to take it down at a, at a time that's as convenient for the staff as we can, and limit the time that we give the contractor to work in there, for probably 30 days, because during that time, they're gonna be hauling the sludge to another facility while we're, we're doing that work, so we'll limit that exposure of our time. You can anticipate seeing back for authorization of bids sometime in the, of May, technically.
Your last comment there, is there gonna be additional costs for us to haul the sludge somewhere else?
There will be, and that was included in our overall project budget.
Or you're just keeping it at your house, Mike?
What's that?
Are you just keeping it at your house?
So is, hey, Glenn or Mike, did, or is this gonna be bonded, or is this just be handled through cash flow?
So we had, we had, in our regular budget.
Okay.
Operating budget.
Okay, so there's no bonding?
No bonding.
And, and you're, you said P plan, is this also be, do you have it out there 10 years from now again?
It will be out.
It will be out.
It will be, okay.
At that point.
Okay, but you're figuring that's something that...
I think, I think some of the challenge with this process is it's, it's not a total new process, sludge, but it is newer, because there is only four plants around here that operate like this, so there's unfortunately some learning to be done here, and we're learning along with everybody else, so, but yeah, we will be incorporating it into our CIP plan in 10 years, and hopefully, we can make it go longer than 10, but that's what we know to do now, so we'll always change that, hopefully, forward.
Ken? Any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the engineering contract with Bowman and Make, and so move. Design, okay. I got a motion by Rick Siler.
Second.
Second by Bruce Wolf. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Hey, Glenn, also. Number four, Ken, I assume your name is written all over this.
Yep, so, what I'm here tonight to basically talk about is setting a council workshop date for a drafted rental dwelling license ordinance, as the council's where we've had, I think, for the 2017 and 2018 years, had this on the list of council priorities moving forward with replacing what is currently Chapter 120 of the city code, or recently registered rental properties. of the city code, where recently registered rental properties, basically they pay a nominal fee per building, and then we have information we pass along to the police department, just generally track number of units, where they're located, who the landlord contacts under case we have, anything from vandalism to emergency calls, that type of things, you know, to get pulled up. We have just over 600 registered units on a two-year cycle that are registered currently, so we've been working with the city attorney on a staff level to draft a ordinance that would actually provide for the inspection of the rental units, not only registering them, but actually going in and looking for life safety issues, mainly smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, and then egress window and egress exiting out of buildings as well. So we intend to have a workshop, much too information to go over at a council meeting, so want to have a workshop to do that. We understand that landlords will be very much interested in this, as they were in the rental registration ordinance at the time that that was adopted back in '08, but want to start with the council, so you guys can take a look at the draft language, kind of talk about the ins and outs of how the programs generally work in communities, talk about whether communities in the area have rental inspection programs currently, and we're getting to be one of the last ones that do not, and having 600 units, we get calls many times in the course of a month from tenants of apartments that would like our help in wondering if they have proper fire protection for their buildings, credit number one question we get. And right now, we can't go into the units and help anybody out, so I think we'll have tenants that might want to see that, I think some landlords might have some reservations, but we will intend to go over those at the workshop. Put in, workshop could take anywhere from one to one and a half hours, could be two hours, but we intend to have Dave Anderson from Kennedy and Graven at the meeting, he was kind of the main architect, and we based our ordinance up at the city of Faribault, where they are also city attorney, and not to get into the weeds too far, but Faribault's rental inspection ordinance is currently challenged by a lawsuit for some crime-free housing component language that they have to that is challenged by the American Civil Liberties Union. We don't have those provisions in our proposed ordinance, so we'll talk about what they are proposing and what we're looking into doing. Police Chief Jim Garis will also be involved in building a special chat under, so we'll kind of hit the highlights, but at that meeting, we do want to get into a bit more detail with you. But suggesting dates, we could do it after a regular council meeting, we could do it on an off council Monday, I just put a couple of different dates that I know work for staff in the city attorney's office, so I don't know if there's one of those times that would work better than another, if we wanted to try to look at maybe a couple of alternatives and get something scheduled for that. But any of these dates are available at no specific time.
Yeah.
I know that I'm not able to meet the 18th or the 19th of March.
Do you think the 4th is too soon? How long will it take you for you to post it?
Probably prefer it for the 4th, to be honest with you, but we wanted to get the dates out there just because we knew, you know, in case some other dates didn't work later on the tail end. I guess I would, I would take kind of sweet spot in there, the 50th or the 11th would be good dates for that.
I would be okay with the 11th, 25th, either of those.
I'm wide open on both.
I'm good for whichever one you want on that table.
6 o'clock work, or 5:30?
6 o'clock on the 11th?
I propose 5:30, we get a little earlier start.
5:30?
5:30 on the 11th?
Correct.
Awesome.
And we will obviously get out a draft before that meeting, and background information will, we'll talk about everything from fees to the language and so on.
And chamber councils?
Oh, we'll explain you that after.
Chambers and...
All right.
Okay. You must be taking the next one?
I will, so something that we don't run into too often, but seem to be running into it a couple of times here in the past couple of years, we have a joint planning commission that we are required to have two residents appointed to that. Is basically a joint body between Scott County and Helena Township, and this is outlined in our orderly annexation agreement that we have with the township. This commission last met on November of 2017, and we had Amy Jurick, who's in the audience here tonight, and Dan Meyer as our appointees for that particular time period, and we believe we will have another need to meet here in 2019 for a project that will be occurring outside of city limits, but within our orderly annexation agreement, and therefore we do need to have appointments remade. This is something we don't normally do at the beginning of the year, because we just don't know often this board will meet, but in the past, city attorney Scott Reggs has noted that while it can be any two residents, it kind of has made sense for cities, particularly in our case, to look at having a council representative as an appointed resident, and then a planning commission member, and historically, in the case of Ms. Jurick, at the time was our planning commission representative from the council, so that's why that appointment was made, along with Dan Meyer from the planning commission. But right now, that same council rep and planning commission rep would be Sean Ryan, and Dan Meyer is still interested to be on the planning, joint planning board, and is still a member of the planning commission, so pick who you would like, but to be consistent with what we had done, we maybe look at Sean Ryan and Dan Meyer to continue on that for the 2019 year.
Has Sean been asked, you know, or...
Andy's interested.
Okay.
It's not like it's a very common, at most we probably meet one time in 2019.
We've been asking, do you need, or do you need an appointment for the government?
Yeah, do we, do we just need to do a motion, Mike, or do you want me to do an appointment?
It's your recommendation that I'm going to be appointed, and the council should inform that.
Okay. Based on that, I guess I will make my appointment to the joint planning commission with Helena Township and Scott County, Representative Council Sean Ryan, and Planning Commissioner Dan Meyer are my recommendations.
So I would say for the 2019 year.
For the 2019 year. Based on that, I guess we'll need a motion to approve my recommendations.
So moved?
Second. I get a motion by Maggie Bass, second by Bruce Wolf. Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0.
We do.
Good. Next on the agenda is something that has, was requested by the city of Savage in regarding to the Dan Patch Line, and I think with the information that was handed out, and then I did hand out a supplemental piece of information that I got from Janet Williams, I did talk to Mayor Williams Sunday afternoon, and just, she just kind of explained to me a little the history of the situation where back a moratorium was set on even discussing by Minda or the Med Council, they could not even discuss utilizing the Dan Patch Line for transportation. There is a representative from Savage now that sits on the House and is proposing legislature to get that moratorium lifted, so that when the Med Council does evaluate all their options to improve transportation or moving, all the options of doing the different things besides light rail, and how to get people to Minneapolis and St. Paul over the river, that the Dan Patch Line would be part of that conversation. She did also mention that there's a group of people that are looking at getting from Mankato to St. Paul on a similar type of existing freight line, railroad tracks, you know, in a similar type of manner, so that's really what this item on the agenda is, and Mike, I know you talked to the city administrator.
And Brad Larsen.
And, you know, if you have any additional input?
No, it's, as the mayor described, is the resolution that you're being asked to consider is one that supports the repeal of the Dan Patch commuter rail line, where there's specific prohibition by the 2002 Minnesota session, session law that basically restricted the state, the Med Council and others to discontinue the study of that line. It doesn't directly affect us, but they're asking us as kind of a good neighbor, would we support their regional efforts within Scott County to undertake activities that would legislatively repeal that moratorium? So there's no fiscal impact to us, there's no procedural legislative or anything, it's just they're asking us if we'll go online as a member of Scott County city participating in scale is to get a letter of support or the resolution that helps them in their efforts to overturn that legislation.
I actually went out to the Minnesota State website, and I looked at the House file, I read, because it went through a couple of readings, et cetera, and now I noticed it also in your handout, Mayor, that the repeal of the moratorium also includes anything up to and including construction, so it's not just a repeal of being able to discuss the topic, or it allows you to study feasibility, study everything up to and including construction. So just wanted to inform you of that in case there's, you know, any way that would cause a change of decision.
Any other comments? I know it's something that, you know, even if we do not go forward on, and I plan to mention it to Representative Bobo and Senator Ray Heim, both of them on Thursday, to talk to them, think that, you know, it's something that should be addressed, and it got me kind of thinking, I wonder how many other things are out there under a moratorium that you can't discuss, you know, which seems kind of...
We can't discuss.
Anti-governmental, I guess, that you can make laws that you can't discuss certain things, it just seems that...
It's in the air.
Kind of unique, but any other comments? If not, I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution supporting the repeal, so I got a second by Rick Seiler. If there's no other comments?
I just kind of, I do think the New Prague has an interest in it, so therefore I think it's applicable, I don't think we would want to do this every day, these kinds of things, in my opinion, but I think New Prague has an interest in it, so I support it.
No, I agree, I think there's other things that have come from the council that we did not, you know, the last few years that we did not go with support of.
I think the last one that we had was a consideration of supporting, I believe was the Alcoy Market, when they were putting together the various sites or alternatives for the Amazon project.
Yes.
So we don't have these things that come across our desks that often, but I think we've got a couple of them in the last 10 or 11 years.
Just don't particularly affect us.
Yeah, I mean, definitely, yeah. So I got a motion by myself, second by Rick Seiler on the floor, there's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? It passes 4-0. Janet will be very happy with us. Next, IT, Mike, are you going to take this one?
I'd like to hand it off to Ken.
Well then, you just go like this, Ken.
He likely will be a participant, he will be a participant in the discussion, both he and the staff and I, and basically all the staff have been working on this for some time, and, you know, I'm not going to read the whole memo, but if you recall back in the budget process, we had discussion about looking at our long-term IT services, hardware and software, and part of what we were looking at in the development of the 2019 budget was looking at moving towards a more managed IT system, and we attached an article from the league that I think does a pretty good job of trying to summarize what it is we're looking at and for, and when we were in the budget process, the council directed us to move in a direction whereby we would obtain proposals from various IT vendors to ensure that the technology services or the managed IT services would be the most economical and cost effective to the city. We have to be working with CIT and had a proposal, we're starting to do some things, but the council asked us to help take a look at it. So Ken was the staff person that assisted in that effort as we, as he made contact with Mel Reader, Melissa Reader, the Chief Information Officer for the League of Minnesota Cities, and I could probably just as well have him come up and talk through the rest of it, but basically asked her, you know, what we should do to go through this RFP process, who were possible vendors that could assist in that process, and then how do we go about soliciting those RFP services? Of all the things that I think we all do in all of our respective departments, from Patty and Bruce and Glenn and Ken and I, this is probably one of the areas that we're all, and we hate to say it, probably weaker on than most of the things that we do, and so we know enough around the edges to what to kind of look for and what to do, but none of us are necessarily either by education, by trade, or by experience, although Jim's not here, Jim Garis has some experience and Ken does, but the rest of us are kind of neophytes in this process. And so as we talked with the league, we were given a couple of vendors that we took a look at, and well, as we met with Mel, we got proposals, talked about who the vendors were, and then went out and attempted to solicit information from the two vendors on the process and the outline of how they would help the city go through the solicitation of proposals from companies that could or were able to provide managed IT services. After obtaining those proposals, we interviewed the two vendors, we have checked references in various cities that have utilized their services, and obtained a final agreement or proposal from both of them on the technology assessment and RFP development services process. The two vendors that were interviewed that we could find in conversations with Mel, and have taken a look at a number of other cities, were the two companies that we have in materials to you that have done work with cities in kind of helping them go through this process. One is Harris Consulting Services LLC, Ken, it's always been Jack Harris Consulting, hasn't it, he wasn't anybody else, it's True North, and the proposal from him is, we have in front of you, was about $20,000 plus expenses, not to exceed $4,500 for travel. The other one was with True North Consulting Group, it's formerly known as Eller and Associates, they're headquartered out of Waco, Texas, with a still one in Minnesota office, and theirs is $19,810 for fixed fee services with all expenses included. Both firms indicated, and looking at their processes, would take basically 12 weeks or 90 days or three months to get through from start to finish, ultimately ending up with a technology recommendation and assessment that would come back to the council, so that you could hear what the results of the RFP process were, and the recommendation on the vendor, and or what are the costs that go with that to satisfy your concerns about the cost of providing managed care in that process. And so in their, in their processes, that would result in undertaking an updated technology assessment, we have good materials that we've provided for both of them, so we're not totally starting from scratch in the process. from scratch in the process. And they would help us prepare the proposed RFP services for going out to bid on. We would advertise, solicit proposals, evaluate bidders submitted, and then develop recommendations for the recommendation of a firm, and present those final recommendations at a formal council meeting. You know, and if we use the 90-day timeframe, we're looking at about the first meeting in June approximately, subject to all things going well in the process. I think the materials that you have and I refer to in our process is that historically, that when you take a look at going into all the functional areas of the software that we use and what we have, and we have 50 full-time employees, is that, you know, the city's system wasn't necessarily, when you go back 15 or 20 years ago, is it wasn't designed to be built on the way that we have gravitated to. And in my materials, I kind of referred to it as kind of a break fix, not in a negative sense, but basically, you know, if something wasn't happening and it wasn't broken, then we didn't have to fix it, but if we did, we fixed it and we moved on. What we found is that in taking a look at the various software that we have, the vendors that we used and the Microsoft Office Systems, is that the vendors seemingly continue to change what operating platforms are needed to support the various computer services that we have. And so we've reached a point that we need to have, you know, a working relationship with somebody to help us take a look at how do we design our system, how do we get the right hardware in place and get everything up and operational, and then have the abilities to transfer the key responsibilities of maintaining the IT, and likely, but it's going to be with a third party with functional access that isn't going to necessarily always be on-site. The design of the hardware would be that they can remotely take a look at it and help us fix or do things where they don't have to run out here or drive to us every time you have to fix something. But then we know that with what we're putting together as we start this process, that we should be there for quite a few years moving forward in the process, and that the foundation of what we're proposing to put in front of you will be well thought out, and we will have bid out those, and so you'll know from as best we can is that it's as cost-effective and that the vendor that will ultimately be selected is very capable of providing managed IT services. So that's kind of the short overview that, I know I took away all of Ken's opportunity to do this. He left me to write it, so I figured, well, if I have to write it, I got to deliver it.
I was gone on Friday, or he might have rolled it.
So he was off the hook that way, but, you know, I have to compliment him in helping us get to the point that all I had to do was to kind of try to attempt to write and summarize the memo. I don't know that there's a whole lot more, if you read the article on what is managed IT services, that either of the firms, I personally called the cities of Owatonna and North Mankato, they used Jack Harris, and they were both completely pleased and excited with the work that they did. Ken contacted...
I contacted for True North, Burnsville, St. Louis Park, and Eagan, and they all have IT staff, and they utilized them for projects like this just because of their expertise in that area and creating RFPs and running through, you know, evaluating proposals. It's like having, you know, SEH is a city engineer, but this is for the technology end of it, and we're not experts enough to adequately review those and give a professional opinion and review on which way we should take it. So that's kind of the way I look at it. Initially, I thought, boy, that's a lot of money for that, but, you know, if you step back and take a look at it, we're trying to set a base, you know, level of service here ultimately that will allow us to, you know, not have delays in service for paying your utility bill or picking up a building permit or any other number of online systems that we have gone to or are going to. So I think it's a, it's not a lot of money to put forward in that light, and will be very well worth it in the long run.
We've already, in working with CIT, Computer Integrated Technologies out of the Twin Cities up in Woodbury, is that we put in a new firewall, we've improved our backup services capabilities, and so we've done some things already that would be built on or utilized as they do their assessment and determine where we need to go for our next steps. But we're being pushed within systems that when we bought a number of years ago, I think Mayor and Sean will be on, when we bought under Tyler Technologies, or with Incode, the financial budgetary utility billing payroll, and now EnerGov...
EnerGov.
EnerGov, with the building permit and building inspection software. Well, we know more than had that system installed in a couple of years' worth of operations.
Two and a half years, three years in.
Now that we've got to upgrade our...
Server.
Server, in order to be able to accommodate their stepped-up operating system to function in our system. And so we're no more immune than anybody else, but the challenge is, is that we don't have anyone on staff that is capable of delivering the oversight and management of our IT system. And so we need to look to the outside to align ourselves with somebody that can help within those parameters and that framework. I asked the city of Owatonna, just taking a look at it, is that, you know, they're a city of what, over 20,000 population, I think, right now, is that they've got three full, they've got an IT director and two full-time staff just on the city side down the water and electric utilities. And so we don't have that, and we checked in the neighborhood, and we think long-term that with what we have and all the various facets and operations, that we need to look at, you know, going to a higher, more sophisticated operational IT system than functionally what we have.
And I think that's probably the biggest concern that the council had, is that it's an area that we probably have not spent the money on, we probably should have over the past few years, but I think it's the right direction. I think we're adding more information onto those servers and things like that, and we have to make sure that they function the way they should, and we have the safeguards into it, and having people from the outside is always, you know, even though you may say 20,000's a lot of money, which it is, but you want to do it right. And I think, to Ken's point, I think it's going to be money well spent to make sure that we get a platform that services the city and a platform also that, Ken, we can expand on and grow rather than have to start over each time.
And security is all involved, is there, I mean, there's a whole security...
That's part of the whole evaluation. They look at the security of all of our internal network, anything coming and going out on, you know, through the internet. Like we said, Mike said, we already have done a firewall, but, you know, make sure that we're still up to date on that. And, you know, is there anything else we're not even thinking of right now that either we should be so we can evaluate it, or, you know, our managed IT vendor we select will help us keep on top of that?
Well, it's the desktops, it's the laptops, it's the telephones, that where we're able to, some of us are, others of us are not, that, you know, where you can access back in and get onto your desktop is making sure that we have the appropriate security provisions in place and the protections to ensure that, you know, we're minimizing to the absolute best of our abilities through whatever their recommendations are, the security in our system. We have a specific area that is coordinated with but separate, is that anything on the police side of operations has to be able to be what they call BCA compliant. And that's the criminal apprehension through the state. All of their software is through LTG, isn't it?
LETG.
LETG, where we contract for software through Scott County. And so all of their daily interaction and filings and police reports and those kind of things go through the Scott County system, but we need to also, they need to have access into our city system for budget and payroll and other elements that they participate in, a council payable system. But we need to make sure that we have separate protections on there, so that'll be an element in that area that we have to ensure. And so we want to make sure, in the work we've already done with CIT, as we have taken a look at our system, is they're not in a position to be able to do remote access because most of our hardware is probably not up to the levels that it needs to be to be able to handle that external management and that we have the security provisions on that, but where they can help solve problems without initially having to be on-site. So it will require a thorough, comprehensive review and putting together the RFP and then soliciting proposals from vendors, conducting the analysis after those proposals come in with the idea that a recommendation and presentation would be made in front of the council.
And does True North have a list of vendors that they usually deal with that would provide the services to the city? Just the question is if there's any potential money exchanging hands for...
We have a list of various providers, and Mel Reader from the league has helped us in identifying...
There's certain ones that we would definitely want to reach out to, certainly, you know, locally and in the region here. Both these firms, you know, we're by the Twin Cities metropolitan area, there's any number of firms we could utilize, but there are also other areas, I think, what was it, Mike? North Mankato that had recently gone through this, picked a firm out of Wasitka, for example. So I think to your point, you know, I don't think there's any preferred vendor on any of these firms.
Okay.
Even CIT, who we've been using, that had given us an outline of proposals for managed services, we would expect them to go through the bidding process as well to ensure that we've got those final numbers so that everybody is up to date and dealing off the same set of specifications.
And right to your question about data security, so ongoing services to the city would include system audits and disaster recovery, and also some system monitoring and what's called a penetration test. So they actually run a test to see if anyone can hack into your, into the system. So those are some, those are good things to have in place. Most organizations that have a IT system will perform those same audits and tests and then provide reporting.
Save the almost $6,000 bucks for our...
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a general question, Ken or Mike, is there any kind of, in the city government sphere, is there any one that provides like data center services so you don't actually have to have your own system? I wonder about Scott County, if you're doing it on the police side.
We had actually done that in the past with Scott County, and I forget all the exact reasons why we got away from that, but there was a lot of downtime and we were not a priority when it was not our system. Because we run a lot of systems that are based in the cloud and then some things run locally, mostly for our building permit applications and then our accounting software. It was tough being at the mercy of somebody else's schedule for downtime and those types of things, so...
Those things can be addressed with the contract that you...
It could be, yeah.
It's, it sounded like more like a brother-sister relationship than a contract.
And that may very well be what some of the firms bring to us. We'll just have to kind of see how, while those evaluate out, and ultimately, what's our downtime, what are we acceptable to, and can they accommodate that with...
That will be thrown into this discussion, and okay, correct.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consulting contract with True North for $19,810.
Seconded by Rick Seiler.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. Next on the agenda. At our last council meeting, we did have a closed meeting where we did perform the evaluation of city administrator, Mike Johnson, as I recall, I think it was at the end of another closed session, and that went a little longer than we thought, so we were kind of tired and that stuff, but we did trench through, and I just want to state that Mike did get a very positive evaluation. I think he was out of five, he was a 4.13, which is a very good plus out of, like I said, out of a total of five. This has been kind of consistent with his evaluations in the past. I think the big thing that came out of there is that Mike has been very fiscally sound leading the city of Dupre, and I think that the council has been very appreciative of his work, serving the council, but also serving the citizens of Dupre. And based on that, I'd like to thank Mike for another positive year in the city of Dupre, and looking forward to another good year in 2019. So with that, Mike, thank you very much. And Mike did receive his COLA increase in salary, so that's why I have to say that. Mike, anything you would like to add?
No.
All right, well, thank you again. Consent agenda, does anyone have any questions, any concerns or anything on the consent agenda?
Just, okay, I'm eyeing the park minutes. We're talking about signage, and I wonder about the practice about approving signs and things, but it sounds like there's been some issues or maybe some discussions now in moratoriums, is it something that you should maybe consider until the issue is resolved?
The only thing we came up with at the park board, we had an inquiry from the Teague's family regarding Foundry Hill Park and the adjacent Chardan Development, which is kind of south of Foundry Hill Park there, that their family had owned land that obviously helped develop part of Foundry Hill Park and in the neighborhood, and necessarily want to rename the park, but there was a woods area back there that was donated as park dedication, and the particular parents of the children that wanted to make the nomination, wanted to do it before they had passed away, and our current policy does not allow that. And the main reason really was that we didn't want developers coming in and donating land and just saying, oh, I want to name this after my company or myself, and there was no historical tie to the land, that type of thing. So that's what we talked about at the park board level so far, and this would obviously come to the council, but getting rid of the requirement that you have to be deceased for a one-year time period, some cities have gotten away from that. Other than that, it was just the idea of are there geographical features and/or other elements that could be named after a family historical name relative to that land? So that's kind of where we've been at this point with that. A number of other cities have policies to that effect. And this was more, could, on the signage of the park, or maybe at that particular amenity, could there be something to acknowledge that? It would be paid for by that family, that entity, not any city would pay for. So we're still kind of working through that.
And wasn't there another ordinance that we had, that land that was vacated? Taken from the family, you know, for the park?
Yep.
Couldn't put their name on it or something?
Yeah, some of the language did say that as well, because, again, that was more to the point of a developer just coming in from wherever, purchasing land and then naming the park in that development after their company, or something that had no historical significant tie to the community, or, you know, some great, you know, benefit to the community or community service or something, that we just didn't want a random name out there that wasn't tied to it. So I think we're...
That would be interesting when it comes here, because I do have some questions. I mean... I mean, if you look at a piece of land like that, it's been owned by that family for quite some time, hasn't it? Wouldn't that count as historical?
Correct. And that's kind of the thing we want to put a little more emphasis on, that historical nature of it. And really, it goes back to the time, you know, Funderhill Park was named before we ever had a park naming policy. The additional land that they dedicated added on to that park. That was the point they're trying to make, this wooded area was part of their historic ownership area and thought it would be neat to have a part of it at least named for the family.
It would be neat.
Yeah, the park board did have a lot of discussion about that because in this instance, I think there's general consensus that it would be nice for the Teets family to be able to name that part of the woods after their parents and therefore that's why we are suggesting that that particular clause of the naming ordinance be removed, that you have to be deceased for that to happen, but still keep in the language that there has to be some sort of a historical tie to that property.
We had a similar problem along the St. Bird River, and we ended up just putting park benches in with flags on the back of them, so I don't-
And we keep that as an option.
That's part, it's signals after that.
Yeah, they wanted to take this kind of to the next level that, you know, the area of the park had significance. Yeah, we have the Memorial Park Bench and Tree Program that you could memorialize somebody, but yeah, they felt this was more significant, and I would tend to agree.
We do.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent items? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other comments or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. And Selenius, Mitch, Mitch is good. Patrick?
More winter is coming.
More winter is coming. He's paying for it. What, you got a snow falling job on the site or what?
No, I've got some top of Minnesota.
Amy, anything you're like that? Go ahead.
Patrick stole my thunder.
Next time I'll start with you, Glenn, so you can get a jump on it.
Thank you.
While we're in, Glenn, can you give an update on the repair process at the golf course on the group of water paper?
Right now, we have all the demo done at the golf course. Company called Legacy, which was hired by the insurance company, League of Minnesota Cities. They have really a cool process. It operates just like the state contract does. They have eight companies that do kind of clean up after a flooded house or business or something like that. And they actually have worked out a contract for them so they don't have to negotiate it at the time of the problem. They're going to get paid so much to do this and so much to do that, and so no questions asked. You don't make any more money than that, so that just streamlines it. It's pretty cool. So anyway, Legacy was in there to demo everything. They had their dehumidifiers running, fans blowing. They took out carpeting and some of the subfloor in the bar area. They took out some sheet rock in the locker room on the main floor and the bathroom, also by the coat rack or room on the main floor there. Shampooed the carpets in the pro shop and sanitized them. Came back, checked to make sure the moisture was down to acceptable levels. And then are coming up with an estimate to do the repairs. And then that goes to the insurance company. Insurance company then gets back to us and says, that's a really good price or you might want to look someplace else. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of where we're at right now. So we're hopefully going to see that estimate hopefully by the end of this week.
What about the pipe itself? Is that going to get relocated?
We actually are abandoning that pipe. And we're actually going to add a heat run in that area. Not necessarily that we're going to keep the pipe there anymore, but it's still a good idea because it's just a cold area and there's no heat source in there whatsoever besides keeping doors open, keeping some doors closed. It's kind of old school. We have the ability to have a heat run right now, so we're going to do it.
Thank you.
Ken? Good. Ken, do you have anything?
Mike? You might have noticed we got a call that earlier this last week that the streetlights were out down in part of the downtown area. That he's getting word from Bruce today that the problem is all fixed. What we've got is some frozen conduits that affected the street lighting due to its age and condition or whatnot, just getting old. They had to trace the lines and find them, and we ended up fixing it down in the vicinity of Wells Fargo so the streetlights should all be working now. No issue there. We are scheduled to leave Thursday to go up to the league legislative day for at least those that are still going to continue to go. And we can talk about that afterwards just to make sure we nearly get out of town around about six forty-five, seven o'clock so that we can compete with traffic to downtown St. Paul. We've got things arranged with Senator Gray, I'm representative of Volvo for that day. Tomorrow night, we've got a joint EDA and Chamber Board meeting here with the city administrator and chamber exec from St. Peter coming in, assuming they don't get waylaid by the snowstorm that is supposed to be starting tonight, going into tomorrow. Glenn, any update from National Weather Service? The last I had seen was six to nine inches possibly.
Yeah, that's the last I saw just after lunch from Mindot's website. Supposed to be starting about two o'clock this morning, tomorrow morning. And by seven o'clock tomorrow morning, it's supposed to have about three and a half inches on the ground. And by five o'clock tomorrow night, it's supposed to have a little over seven inches on the ground. Now, that could have changed, but I haven't seen it, so.
So depending on what we hear from the two individuals from St. Peter, the joint meeting is intended to start at six thirty. We'll just have to see tomorrow afternoon whether that's still on or not. And so we'll post that with both the newspaper and the radio and on the website if something changes in that regard. Plus, we'll send out an email to members of the EDA and the Chamber Board as well. Last week, members of the fire department went and picked up the bumper ladder truck from Wisconsin. So we do have the new backup in place. And so we're back to essentially what we would need, full coverage from that standpoint. So we're glad to have that back in place. We have the appropriate amount of equipment. They've been working on the overview of what they see or the tentative specifications for replacement of the pumper and new pieces that would be added on to that. And so they've asked the mayor and I to meet with the rural heads of those, the head of the Rural Fire Association to take a look at that and depending upon where they're at and what they've got for cost estimates and how things look, then it would go back in front of both the council and/or the entire Rural Fire Board. So that could be coming in the near term or possibly sometime next month. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Bart?
No.
Maggie?
No, nothing.
Rick?
No, everybody drive safely, please.
Okay, I don't have anything, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second by Maggie Bass. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, we're out of here. Thank you again, everyone.